Welcome to the regular meeting in Guadalupe City Council, Tuesday, October twenty eighth. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fornes?
Here.
Councilmember Viegas?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
And Mayor Julian.
Here. We have a quorum. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready? Begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is a moment of thanks, appreciation or condolences. Is there anyone in council members wish to address that? Good. Okay, we're good. All right, the next item four is agenda review. At this time, any council person wishes to change order of business? We, anybody request that? Okay, we're good, so. This is dodger time, huh? I mean, right along.
Right.
Okay. Item five, the community participation forum. I see no request to speak. Is there anyone out in the audience that requests to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, and we'll go to item six. Did we get any public or email, that information? Okay. Consent calendar following night is presented to the council as a single agenda item. Is there a council member or staff person that wishes to pull an item A through G? Judy?
Yes, sorry. Um, I need to make a correction from last month's minutes during the announcements. I had incorrectly gave a, a update, a committee or announcement, a committee update from one of the members. And it was actually, I said it was Councilmember Hernandez, and it was actually Councilmember Viegas. So my apologies, it was, I was doing the minutes late that night and kind of got.
Okay, no problem. I don't know if we have to pull that, Phil? No, just, uh, just to prove it as per.
Well, I guess you probably do have to pull it because you're changing it. So, sorry, you gotta pull it.
Okay, we'll pull, uh, item C. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then back to, uh, item C. It stands corrected. Is there council person that wants to add anything to that? Or do you want to make a motion to approve that as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve item C of the consent calendar as amended.
Is there a second? There's motion and a second. Any discussion?
Whitney?
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, all right. Uh, item seven, management reports. City administrator?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give an update that October fifteenth, at three P M. Was the deadline for the Oversight Committee. And only two people met, met it was Mira and Whitney. And then, um, a couple that lives in Pasadena at about five submitted, but even with those two, it doesn't make five and for the five Brownac body. So I don't know, um, staff will need guidance. Do you want me to continue posting that and for a duration of time?
Phil, your recommendation?
Since you can't take any action, um, I would recommend that, um, since we haven't, that, that staff just extend it because we don't have the five yet.
Okay. We're good with that, council?
I mean, if there's an issue with that, then we can ask to agendize an item and we can do that in the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Also, I was contacted by, uh, the League of Women's Voters and they want to hold a, um, a, um, a public meeting to discuss our city and what we are doing short and long term. And have asked me to be participate. It's November eighteenth at twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five from five thirty to seven. But I think they also wanted to reach out to some council members, but we can only have two. So should I make a recommendation?
Did, are you gonna be there?
I did get an email request to participate. I'm not too sure who the second individual was, um, but I did receive that email Friday night, Friday evening.
Okay. You interested?
I did reply that I, I would be interested. Yeah.
Sounds good.
I didn't get an email. It's, I'm not, we have a lot of staff. You're gonna be there, right?
I'm gonna be there. Um, I suggest maybe the guy that's not here.
I second that. Just appoint him.
Okay, okay.
See what he does, and if not, we'll, uh, we'll play it by ear.
Okay, he's gonna kill me.
It's all right.
Um, also, uh, last week, Larry Apple, the Planning Director, um, sent out an email, um, and attachments that are in front of you. Uh, again, in twenty twenty-two, the city adopted the, um, twenty forty-two general plan update, which is the roadmap that the city will follow its Bible basically rules and sort of where it wants to see the city to go. And in there, there's, um, in the backend, um, there's categories for, um, and programs that it could range from anywhere from one to three years where, um, each department should, you know, address and try to handle and get, get those taken care of. We're not gonna get all of them, but the idea is for us to submit them to Larry by November third. Management team's gonna talk tomorrow about it, and I just want to give the city an update that staff is working on that because they have to report that to the state, you know, the status of where we're at with the implementation programs in the, in chapter eleven of the general plan. And as you know, this is a very thick document and it's.
Yeah, our general plan is, yeah.
Yeah.
But if you look at that general plan, that sets in motion what we're gonna do in the future. I think that this, this, uh, element recap touches every department, recreation, streets, police, um, city administration, finance. So it's important, and a lot of what I, what I've seen here, uh, and what Larry submitted to us, where it talks about status, 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 so they're looking, he's looking for status. Some of these areas are, uh, have been addressed or will be addressed. And I see that there's a lot of things, uh, items that we're doing.
Right.
That's not, uh, noted.
Yes.
So it's important for city staff and also others that are working on. So there's one on, on beautification and cleanup and connections with other, uh, programs. One is important is the school, uh, looking at, uh, joint powers of agreement. So that's a task that Mr. Navarro is gonna be looking at, uh, if not already. But, uh, it's good reading and, uh, we have copies of that in English and Spanish of the, of the plan. So it's, uh, it's important to us to basically make sure that we know what we're doing. Uh, there's, we spent, the city spent a lot of money in putting that general plan together.
And, and we got a grant to do it.
Exactly, so, and a lot of time. So it's important for staff and council people to, to basically follow this, so. And then we'll keep in, keep up to now. He's asking for the third, that's next week.
That's right. We should be able to do it. He highlighted it, so.
Okay, all right. Thanks for bringing that up.
And, um, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I wanted to introduce Annette Munoz. Um, she's our interim, uh, Finance Director in the back there. So she's been doing a fantastic job and she's working with her consultant and getting things up to speed, so.
Good.
We're really happy that she's on board, helping us out.
I hear good things, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That ends my report.
Okay, all right. Uh, next item, Director of Public Safety, Chief Cash?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff, Citizens. Um, the only thing of, um, I should say importance, uh, that's, that sticks out for us is, um, we've been, uh, heavily addressing, uh, school safety um, for the last couple of weeks as far as kids going to school. Um, so we've, uh, at least, uh, the morning personnel uh, have been at the intersections of, uh, Obispo and one sixty-six and Guadalupe and one. It's been pretty successful, um, dealing with traffic and everything, but unfortunately, you know, uh, some people got to the point where they'll call in because they want traffic to move further, to, to move faster. So, uh, uh, it gets very interesting, but it's been very successful and, uh, we were today at the school. They were having some presentations, so, um, we're, we're trying to work closer with the school on a whole lot of different, uh, uh, projects until maybe sometime in the future, we can look at a school resource officer. But so far, um, everyone seems to be somewhat, uh, happy with that. Other than that, um, there's nothing new in the fire department. That'll be a personnel thing that I think the human resources can talk about captain position and so forth. But that's my report unless there's any questions.
All right, you, were you gonna, please?
You're sorry, you talked about the S R O. Um, I know we had one before. All right, do you have a budget for that or when you look at to hire, you'll have to recommend budget for that?
Yes, uh, that, the S R O that we had in the past was from a grant. It was a fifty fifty grant, uh, with the school. Um, the school did not put in for the grant, uh, so, um, yeah, that would have to be a budget adjustment.
I'm gonna add to, uh, I was gonna bring it up later, but I'm gonna add to Chief's, uh, report, and this past Thursday, there was a group of bikers that, that's related to, it's Project Hero Welcome to Guadalupe. They came through Guadalupe and then stopped at Leroy Park for the potty break, and then they were headed to, uh, Orchid for breakfast, but they started in Santa Cruz and they're going all the way to Port Wanimi. And, uh, Chief Cash assisted that group, um, in the, in the ride. There was forty plus riders. And just a little bit about it, it's a national nonprofit dedicated to helping veterans and first responders affected by PTSD and traumatic brain injury and injury to achieve rehabilitation, recovery and resilience in their daily lives and increasing awareness to combat national mental health emergency, uh, posed by PTSD and T B I. Uh, it was interesting that, uh, the riders were very, uh, happy to be in Guadalupe. The Leroy Park looked good, the restrooms were good, um. And one of the riders, because they rode through agricultural area, uh, thanked us and thanked, they asked me to thank the farm workers in Guadalupe for putting food on the table of the, of the nation. And that was, that was neat. Uh, some of these bikers, uh, they look like rock. They were, uh, well, if you ride five hundred miles, you're gonna, you're gonna be in pretty good shape. And they're also international. They'll actually go to other, other, uh, other nations and they, they do it, uh, um, statewide, so it's really good to, good to see. So if anybody's interested in riding with them, uh, better start now because next year is coming quick. And by the way, they, uh, they actually gave the city, uh, this shirt, it was assigned by the, they asked me to put it on, but I said it wouldn't fit, but they, they asked, they said this is for the city because it's a project, uh, project hero. There were, uh, a lot of them military, uh, police officers, fire, fire personnel, so they were, next year, we're gonna do a bigger thing for them because they were just passing by and, and Chief helped them get through our busy intersection here, so thanks, Chief. That was, anything else? Sorry, I jumped on your report, so, okay. Okay, HR, Human Resource, Sylvia?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff and Citizens. Um, got a lot of recruitment going on, as you can see. Um, we do have the city administrator position, in case you didn't know, that's posted. Um, we have received a few applications that are currently being screened. Um, we have the public safety, um, airport police officer that is in the, uh, background process. Um, probably has another, maybe another thirty days before that's completed if all goes well. And then we have the fire captain who I'm pleased to report that we've received about seven, eight applications to date. So, yeah, with some experience, so it's pretty nice to see. Um, Chief is reviewing those and hopefully we can start getting in some interviews. Um, building attendant, little bit of a pause there. We've had some scheduling conflicts, um. Both schedules just kind of didn't line up, so we're trying to get through that and get somebody, um, on board to relieve, uh, some of those duties. Waste water, um, operator, we do have a, uh, interview scheduled for next week. Um, and the wastewater, I'm sorry, water maintenance operator, we also have another one that we're working on, um, to be scheduled for next week. Um, we do have the, uh, open enrollment, um, benefit fair that I just confirmed, um, scheduled for November thirteenth. I just got that set up today. Um, we got some information back on our dental and vision and life, um, uh, premiums. A very minimal increase, um, I believe it was less than four percent with no increase in the life insurance, so that will stay, um, pretty consistent to what we have. The, um, workers comp case, we did, uh, finally finalized one of the long-term cases that we've been monitoring. Uh, one of them still remains open and then we do have, uh, another employee that is, remains on modified duty and we're still able to accommodate him. Um, the driver's safety training, um, that notification's been sent out to the employees for them to complete on their own and they do have sixty days, um, to complete that. Some of them have already taken the, the course, so it'll just be a refresher. And then, uh, we will, uh, distribute a, a policy, um, to make sure that we kind of keep an eye on that and make sure our employees are licensed and, um, have all the safety protocols in place. They're gonna be, uh, driving for any, uh, city business. The, uh, anti-harassment, uh, training was scheduled for December sixth, but I just got a call yesterday that, uh, the gentleman double booked, um, and will not be able to come out, so the next date that he is available will be January sixth, and that will be on site, um, for the employees who need to, um, the newer employees, and then we have a couple of, um, members and council that need to also take that. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
I have a comment on that, and, you know, anti-harassment. Normally, uh, in my other life, we did it via, um, not Zoom, but on the, on, online. Does this have to be in person?
There is an option to do that, but because we have so few opportunities to get the employees together, I, I kind of like to do that if we can, yeah.
Do it once.
Get a little bit of, yeah, team building and.
Okay.
I think it's helpful.
Sure.
Sylvia or maybe Chief on the, um, airport police officer, is this, uh, is, is this to be paid? Let me back up. As my understanding was that, uh, the two officers that were assigned to the airport were paid via the contract we have with the airport. Is this a new position or is this a replacement?
This is an, uh, addition to the contract, um, because the airport changed the contract. Um, they have another airline that came in, so, uh, now it's gonna be seven days a week. And those, the two we have there, uh, will not be able to do, uh, all those hours. So I had a discussion with the airport people, so all we're really doing is just covering the hours. So, and airport will pay for, um, everything.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Thank you. That's it, Sylvia?
That's it. That's it for that report.
Okay, all right. Any questions of Sylvia? Good. Item ten, the Recreation Service Manager, Mr. Navarro?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Staff and Citizens. Um, so we opened up, um, coming from off September, uh, we had a late, uh, special meeting, uh, at the end of September. Um, and then through that, we came off into our future activities. Uh, we started October with, uh, a community hike, um, with our council member Hernandez, um, and that was a, that was actually a really cool hike. Um, highly recommend. Um, you guys didn't know, we have a beautiful beach right in our backyard. Um, and then we, we went right into, uh, our movie night, um, which was really, uh, going really well. It's growing. Uh, people are getting, uh, getting worried about it, um, and it, it's a good time, uh, um. You know, it's a really affordable. We have our own snack bar. Everything is under five dollars. Um, people really enjoyed the, uh, this past one and we're looking forward to the next one. Um, and then we have a community of friend that going on currently in our glass case. We've been encouraging, uh, community members to put a picture of their loved one in there. Um, and so then we're rolling right into, uh, Guadalupe. Um, we've, I've been, uh, prepping myself. Um, if you guys took a look in, uh, the main corridor of City Hall, uh, you've kind of seen the decorations already being put up. Um, yeah, tomorrow I'm gonna get with, uh, the rest of the managers and make sure we're all on the same page. Um, but, uh, yeah, we're really excited. Uh, earlier today, I was over at, uh, McKenzie, um, uh, working with a few kids. One, one kid, I was like, huh, you look like someone, uh, a Little Miss Aubrey. And I was like, huh, who do you look like? And, uh, it, it's great. They're helping me make, uh, we're paper mashing, uh, some skull masks for the Resmeritos stopping on Saturday. Um, which is also, uh, a lot of people are excited about it, um, getting the buzz around and, and just kind of, um, building out different, uh, decorations for that, and I was grateful that, um, the school was, uh,
special.
Yeah. So helpful to, um, wanna participate in helping me, uh, and I, I really appreciate the opportunity because then I could, you know, get into the schools and, uh, have some arts and craft for some of those kids that, you know, don't have arts, uh, programs in their schools, so. It, it's been, uh, it's been a lot, but it, it's been really fun. I'm really excited for this weekend, uh, and to just, uh, see the city have a, a fun time, not only at Guadalupe, but, uh, the Resmeritos event, and, um, yeah, that, that's, that's it for me.
You mentioned the movie night, five dollars to get in or what? Did you?
Ten dollars to get in.
Ten dollars to get in?
No, it's free.
Okay.
It is.
You said five dollars, right?
Yes. Uh, specifically our, uh, the reaction, uh, sorry, um, the snack bar we have, everything is under five dollars.
Okay.
Drinks, food, whatever. It, it's, it's free to get in and you get a free bag of popcorn.
Can't beat that. Um, and that, that report regarding the, the, uh, our plan, it requires our connection with the joint powers agreement with the school, so. There was, as we saw last Wednesday, I saw last Wednesday with open volleyball, there had to be fifty people there. And because the school received money, state money for that building for the gym, that I know that the Boys and Girls Club already has approached them to be able to use that gym for activities. And my thought was with all the people that were there, and I was really happy because it was all, uh, genders. Uh, and a lot of Hicanas were playing in there and they were, they're really good.
Yeah.
And then you had these guys from, uh, Rigetti that were just jammed the ball straight down, but everybody had a good time. So it'd be nice to be, it's hard to use Leroy Park for volleyball because of the, the conduits. But I think in the future, using, I know that you probably talked to Handel, Dr. Handel about the basketball courts, and somebody also mentioned that since we asked them not, the residents not to put the portable on the street to be able to use their, uh, basketball courts, and I think, I know that he's open to that, so we need to pursue that and, and you will, uh, because it's part of our requirements, so.
Oh, definitely. And I'm, I was happy to see you out there and even our own Cynthia was out there and, and got to play. It, it's awesome. Uh, that, that was a great night. I, families, families were there and that was really cool to see.
Well, they had little kids, which is fine.
Yeah.
Because where do you, you don't have a babysitter, so where do you, you know, bring them in and let Cynthia or you take care of the kids, so.
I mean, hey, it's, it's really about, because that's, you know, what community is about, you know, and then, uh, having them to, uh, place because it, it's hard enough just to get a workout in, let alone, uh, team sport. Um, so if that's what it takes, you know, that's what it takes, uh, because it was, it was great, especially to see the Hicanas out there, you know, balling it up, you know, even they were spiking it out, but they would catch it. It was good. They had some good rallies going.
Well, one of them, one of them got hit pretty hard with a, one of the high school guys and she laughed it off. And the next time he was going up for a spike, they already cleared, let him, let him hit. But it was, it was really, uh, nice to see. They were all, uh, really helpful. And I know Cynthia was trying to serve and they let her serve three or four times before she got over the net, but she's getting better, so.
Yeah.
And you mentioned adult sports. What's, what's happening with adult sports?
Um, so, uh, well, as far as right now, um, we just have drop-in sports, um, but we are looking to, well, now it's gonna be to the next year of, uh, bringing back the softball league and we also in, uh, March, I want to do, um, uh, uh, basketball tournament, Joe Harris Classic, if you will. Um, and that will be a one-day tournament, uh, to get everybody kind of, we'll do a three-team or a three-player team.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, it mainly, well, I mean, outside the league, uh, of softball, probably do, I'm just looking to do like one-day, uh, tournaments, just because it seems like with time-wise.
For what? For?
Uh, for basketball, volleyball would be a great one, um, and then I'd like to pick up pickleball as well to get that going.
Yeah, we got an eighty thousand dollar cement over there, so.
Right there, you know, so, yeah.
Okay, good, as long as that's on the agenda some, somewhere, so.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions of, of, uh, Mr. Anufo Navarro? Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now the regular business, uh, item eleven, appointment to fill vacancy on the Recreation of Parks Commission. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Staff and Public. Um, now that, um, uh, Arnuful is, uh, employed by the city, he left a hole in the commission. So with that is recommended that the City Council point one of three, who would, who would put their name in the hat. Uh, the deadline was October fifteenth. We received three, uh, to fill that vacancy. Um, the selected individual will serve a four-year term beginning October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and ending October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-nine. And with that, I believe there are a, at least two to three of the individuals who submitted on time. And they're here tonight if you would like to ask them any questions.
We would like to see, uh, Mr. Russell, Mr. and Miss, there. Is that person here? And I see, uh, Mike Rockland, you, you want to come up and say a few words? Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. I understand I have three minutes?
You need more than three minutes?
I'm just, I'm gonna.
You're, you're good.
Clarifying.
No, you're, you're. Agenda item, so you're good. Go ahead.
Okay, and I understand that we're broadcasting?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Idealmente, los departamentos trabajan de la mano beneficiando mutuamente y cohesionando la ciudad. Finanzas, administración, construcción y planificación, biblioteca, obras públicas, agua, bomberos, policía. Recreación y parques. Un ejemplo de esos dos últimos es la visita regular del jefe Cash. A los partidos se practica los viernes por la noche. Acercarse a la comunidad es inteligente y proactivo. Receptivamente creo que al jefe le gustan las visitas, lo que reduce al estrés. Y le permite aprender de la experiencia. Mientras tanto, los jóvenes y adultos observen un lado amistoso, personal. De lo que de otro modo se presenta en los medios de manera perjudicial. Otro ejemplo es el comisionado Harris. Que no solo organiza estos programas existosos, sino que constantemente logra lo casi milagroso. Incluyendo iradicar las malas palabras. Eso tipo ese, ese tipo de participación es crucial. Ya que el presupuesto de recreación y parques es aproximadamente. Una vigésima parte de la seguridad pública policía bomberos. Comparelo con San Luis Obispo donde es aproximadamente una octava parte. Sin mencionar si ero o San Francisco. Después de más de diez años de residencia y seis temporadas dirigiendo nuestro equipo local mixto de adultos. Es hora de formar, en varios sentidos de la palabra, nuestra propia liga local. Enfrentar los problemas actuales y realizar nuestro potencial. Ideally, departments, city departments work hand in hand, benefiting each other, cohering the city, finance, administration, build. Planning and, building and planning, library, public works, water, fire, police, recreation and parks. Now, one of the example, one example of these last two is Chief Cash's regular visits to Friday night scrimmages. Reaching out to the community is intelligent and proactive. Reciprocally, I believe the chief enjoys the visits, reducing stress, learning from the experience. Meanwhile, youth and adults observe a friendly, personal side of what is portrayed otherwise in damaging media. Another example is Commissioner Harris, who not only organizes these successful programs. But consistently accomplishes the near miraculous, including banishing cursing. That type of involvement is crucial as recreation and parks budget is approximately one twentieth of that for public safety, meaning police and fire. Compare that to San Luis Obispo, where it is about one eighth, not to mention Seattle or San Francisco. After over ten years residency and six seasons managing our local coed adult squad. It is time to form, in several senses of the word, our own local league, confront current issues, realizing potentials.
Okay, are you open to questions?
I'm prepared for questions.
Give us a little bit of your experience and recreation programs.
Of all the city programs of my ten years here, the only one that. Allowed me to get acquainted with a wide range of members of the community. Was Joe Harris's Rec and Parks Friday Night Scrimmage.
Okay. Any other questions or questions? Any questions of us?
None.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Richard. You pronounce your last name. I don't. Okay, thank you for being here.
So good evening. Thank you guys for this opportunity. The reason why I applied for this position, because I know I'm a proactive individual in this community. Obviously, some of you guys know I coached the Guadalupe Bulldogs. You know, that's part of team building, building the report with the youth. As far as the administration go, I need some help and some training with that. But with the proper training, I know I could get the job done. So with me, I'm just a proactive person in the community. I just want to get involved in the community. So we could grow like a spiritual family here and grow as a unit here in this community. Excuse me. I believe Guadalupe is a city of growth and I think we need some excitement around here, you know. It's, this is a peaceful town here and everybody it seemed like to get along with, but you know. We just need that extra push around here, some excitement, some, you know. I don't know. I felt like for me it's too quiet here, which is good, which is good, but you know. Let's get some excitement going on around here, you know, and then again, there's a lot of youth too. And I want to get involved with the community as far as with the youth. They need something to do around here and I'm willing to take on over that role. So I'm the type of person, whatever you need me to do, I'm, I'm here. So this is from the heart.
In your note, you have a background as a school-based youth treatment counselor. Can you explain a little bit about that?
Well, yes, I was doing that. I was working with the adverse youth population. So basically they have a substance use disorder, any, they have problems with substance use disorder and behavior issues. So anytime they have a behavior issue or some type of use of alcohol or drugs, they'll come to me and I'll talk to them, educate them about. Not using drugs and not using alcohol. Some of these kids, you know, they don't have a healthy household. So I, I basically take over that father role, if that makes sense, you know, try to be a father to these kids, you know. Again, there's no father figure in these kids alike. So sometimes I take over that role and trying to find a way for them to. Heal from their trauma experience, so.
How long you been coaching?
This is my fourth year. And we got a big playoff game on Saturday against Napomo, so I appreciate you guys come.
Where's it at?
At, uh, AG High School. Yeah.
Any questions, please?
You talked about things being quiet here, which is good, but what, what's an idea of something that would?
Well, well, just look at, for example, let's look at San Luis Obispo. They have the, what's that event they have every Thursday there? Far as market, I feel like we need to do something like that here every Thursday and Friday night. I don't know. It's a good idea, you know, something to excite the community, you know.
Sunday, Leroy Park.
Yeah, 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 you know, and I, and I feel like we need some more for the, for the, for the youth. Because right now according to work at PV and the drug rate in PV is high and these kids have nothing to do. So maybe have these type of events here, it's going to, you know, somewhat deteriorate for the kids to do bad things, you know. I don't know if that makes sense, you know. Yeah, we, you know, we, we got the new facility, housing complex over there, so that's a help. But we need some excitement. You just mentioned about basketball tournaments, sporting tournaments, that's a good idea. That's going to spark the community. Oh, we could go to this basketball event. And you know, the whole community could get involved and donate something, you know, to generate some type of money too, you know. So I don't know. I feel like I could be the spark to this town, you know.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the other gentleman, I assume is a gentleman, Suda, it's a woman, I'm sorry, yeah.
Todd, were they invited?
Yes, they have all three, yep.
All right, the task is back to us. Any comments, suggestions, opinions?
Thank you both for coming. I, we really appreciate it, you coming out here and wanting to participate in our Recreation Commission. But I know our new full says that just doesn't stop there. There's always ways to volunteer with our Recreation and Parks Department. So thank you both.
Now it's our task to recommend and appoint. We have the letters of interest. Is there, is there someone that you wish to bring forward in terms of? Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint. Richard, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, as the, to fill the vacancy on the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? I have some discussion. I think that, that Mike brings, you know, attention to. Especially in the Spanish speaking community in terms of what we need. And he's been here for a while, so he knows the lay of the land. Given that, I think that I'm going to call for the motion. So is there any questions regarding the motion, any discussion? So those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all ayes. So Mr. Richard.
Yeah.
You're appointed to the, thank you both, Mike, thank you for being here too. Stay interested in the community like you always do, so. Then Mr. Navarro will give you information in terms of what we do. Sure, please. Pardon? No, sir. You're welcome. But appreciate your comments.
Just a general question, Mayor?
Yes.
Will he be. Giving the oath of office at the next Parks and Rec Commission or is that? Is that done here?
Oath of office.
I think to get him on to the, the agenda, I might have to do it in, in my office.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he doesn't have to be at a meeting as long as it's before the, before he actually participates in the meeting. Okay, will you let him know, Navarro and Todd?
Yep.
Right. Thank you all for that. Next item is item twelve, appointment of interim city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On September thirtieth, I submitted my form, my sixty day notice to resign. And my last day is November thirtieth. To ensure continuity in city operations and leadership during the recruitment and appointment process for a permanent city administrator. It is both prudent and necessary to designate an interim city administrator. So I strongly recommend that Mr. Trujillo, the city's current public works director, be appointed to this role. Beginning December first, twenty twenty five. Is, since I've seen him, he's demonstrated strong leadership, a deep understanding of city operations and a commitment to public service. That I believe uniquely positions him to succeed in this interim capacity. In recognition for those additional responsibilities associated with this role. Staff is recommending a temporary salary adjustment. Mr. Trujillo would receive an annualized salary of, if you approve it. Hundred and sixty thousand dollars or seventy six dollars and ninety two cents per hour. And it's, it's in alignment with, I think, the position and the situation. So I'd recommend that you approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash sixty three approving the appointment of Mr. Trujillo.
Questions of Todd or Mr. Trujillo?
I have a general question. By taking on the city administrator role, would he? Would he still be able to handle all the things he's handling with his current role?
Yes, I believe that he.
Can we, can he answer that?
Oh, sure.
I mean, yeah, a general, so who, no, I was talking to the room, whoever wants to answer it.
Yes, ma'am, I feel like I can. My staff have a pretty good idea of how I already operate. And being that I moved a lot of stuff digital, I'm able to track stuff without actually having to watch them physically. So that would give me the ability to maintain coverage as city administrator.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question.
Okay, please.
This is for Todd. Were any other candidates in your mind for this or was David the?
No, this, this was, a lot of times you'll get a retired annuitant and it's becoming more and more and more complicated in that regard. So I just thought it made sense to have somebody internally and can step right in and he's been around, he's seen things, he's a walk around type manager. And I feel like he, just his, he fit the suit, if you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Christina?
I guess, I'm not sure if it's just a general question, not just on this specific item, but as a council, what can we expect to filling in that position?
I know HR is working on that right now and I believe that, what's the deadline for that, for the permanent?
I'm not sure that's what you meant. Is it? Like, yeah, I think, like, what can you expect with the transition and is that what you're talking about?
Or do you mean like the search?
I think, no, not the transition, because I think, yeah, I guess the end date, or what does that look like? The end date. Or the filing end date for the city administration position. What does that look like for us?
Permanent position.
So you're talking about the recruitment process? Yeah. Okay, so the job is posted with an end date to collect applications through November thirtieth. After that, the candidates will, that are selected will interview with council. And then hopefully we can find somebody and then go through the onboarding process. Got it. It's a little bit more in depth than a normal employee, but yeah, I think we've got some pretty good candidates already, so hopefully we can.
Thank you. I was just curious. Uh, to follow up with your question. How, so I guess it, when David takes over or if, if David takes over on December first. At that point, you said that the interviews will happen or will interviews be happening before Todd leaves?
They will not happen until after December first, yes.
Okay, so then, then to follow up with Councilmember Hernandez's question. How, how long do you think David, if David is the one, will be in that role as interim city administrator?
It depends on how quickly we select somebody.
Yeah.
So if you like the first batch, then, you know, it would take a month after that.
Okay, so I mean, minimum a month could be longer is what you're saying.
Yeah, definitely longer, especially with the holidays. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
My question relates to the transition. So you're terminating November the thirtieth and he starts November, December one.
Yes.
It sounds like he would need to bridge the gap with you.
Yes. As opposed to starting that. We've, we haven't really spoke too much about that, but I wanted to wait to see what happens tonight, so.
Well, my concern is that there needs to be even a week or two weeks where he takes his. Public Works hat off and puts a city administrator, interim city administrator hat on, so.
That makes sense.
I had another question of David. David, why do you think you fit this position as temporary city administrator?
I was kind of hoping this question wouldn't come up. I, I feel like in my short time here. I've gotten out, I've seen the community, I've started interacting within the community. Seeing what this community is kind of. Trying to see what this community needs to thrive. And some of that is things like infrastructure, maybe some. Strategic acts to bring in commerce, different things like that. I was kind of hoping I would have Todd around a couple more years so that I had someone to actually learn from that has a lot of experience. But I think he set a good course that. With your guys' goals and objectives that you set, if I can continue to fulfill those. I think we would be on a good line to. I think we would be on a good line to continue progressing towards the future. But it's, it's going to take a community, it's not one person. And I realized that very quickly, that whether you're city administrator or public safety, it's not something that one person can do alone. And I think that my experience in leadership roles, both in the military, on the civilian side, have kind of set me up to where it's easy for me to communicate with people and find what their actual long-term goal is, and I think that was kind of what we need to sit down and decide as a city and as a community, where we want to go. Then I'm willing to put on that hat and take on that role.
You know, your Public Works, can you give us one minute of your experiences in the world of work in terms of where you've been, what you're, what you've done?
So, well, I've been here for eight months as the Public Works Director. Before this, I was working at California Men's Colony, leading inmate construction crews, facilitating or doing facility maintenance throughout the institution. And then before that, I was, or concurrently, I was in the Air Force Reserves. Probably a year before I came here, I just came off three years of active time as an operations superintendent for an engineer squadron, where I was running the day-to-day, functioning as the, controlling the finances, strategic planning, deployment tempo, the various trainings. And then before that, or before the Men's Colony, I was working for Department of Food and Agriculture as an agricultural technician. And at CMC, I was a budget analyst, managing their, they had an amazing budget, $437 million annually. So I was managing that. And then I came here, so. Kind of been around.
All right.
I know previously we had the Public Works Director vacancy for quite some while, so I appreciate you just kind of came in running.
Thank you. Please.
This is just a general comment about the recruitment process. I think it's important to not rush, to have, so you know, I don't use the term permanent, but a regular city administrator. It, it's a critical position, and I think we need to take our time. I believe we have David, who is sincerely going to put all that he has into this interim position, so I think we're safe in that regard. So I, I, I just don't want to see this rushed, to have David back into Public Works Director, and then we have someone, you know, within a month or two. In, in prior recruitment process for a city administrator, it does take a while, and I think it's, it's worth our time, staff's time to, take its time to find the right person.
Thank you for that, Amelia, I appreciate that support. I think if we have somebody who is capable of filling the spot interim, have nothing to lose to, to make sure that it's, it's done correctly.
And just, the gray area for me is a transition before you leave, and so is there going to be a, a, a handoff of some sort?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Starting tomorrow.
Okay.
Shadowing and looping them in and any emails that are really important.
I think that's my one more question. Have you looked at the, the city administrator job description, David?
Yes, ma'am, I have.
How, do you fit the qualifications of it?
I think I do.
Okay, are you going to apply for the position? You don't have to answer that. All right, thank you.
Now, we have a resolution before us, Resolution of City Council of Guadalupe, approving the appointment of interim city administrator and authorize a temporary compensation. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-63?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-63 to appoint Public Works Director David Trujillo as interim city administrator effective December 1, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second and, and, and comments. I just wanted to know that if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address this particular item. Sir?
Hey, good evening, everybody, my name is Robert Diaz, I'm a community member here in Guadalupe, and a board member of the Guadalupe Community Action Coalition. I saw this on the agenda and came down specifically for this, just because I think you guys are making a great choice, you know, if you make the choice, of course, in bringing David on to fill in Todd's shoes. In the short time he's been here, and the short interactions that I've had, have been always positive, he's, has a lot of patience, a lot of understanding, if we look back very recently at the Speed Bump Gate, or whatever you want to call it over in Pasadena, he held that with aplomb. Yeah, he held it with aplomb, here's the thing, he showed up, he made, he made a quick decision, a quick response for everybody's safety, you know, with a short period of time in which that decision had to be made. Even when there was complaints, he provided the reason for it, and then was very reasonable about reevaluating the situation, and then adjusting accordingly. When it comes to just community engagement, you know, at least from, you know, the Facebook Nextdoor standpoint, anybody that has had interactions with him has only provided positive feedback. And that's really just drastically from going, we hate these speed bumps, who's the fault, is this too? Wow, David Trujillo is really awesome, he was really great and had great conversations with him. So from that standpoint, as a community member and a local nonprofit board member, I think he's a great choice for this, so.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments out there? There's a motion in the, is there any further discussion, if not, we'll have roll call.
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vegas?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
And Mayor Julian.
Aye. Just an, an add-on, when we were doing, and I'm going to mention this later on in the city beautification, that when the volunteers said they needed something done, he had a crew out there doing it, and to our amazement, there was a complaint about weeds next to Roy's Liquor. And complained about that, maybe, what was it? I don't know what day it was, but two days, maybe one day after that it was clean. So that's action, and that, and that really says something about action from a city, city person, so. Okay, thank you, any, any comments, David?
I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity and having the trust of me to be able to hold this position. Thank you.
And Robert. Good man, dude.
Sounds like a Romo burrito. Okay, we'll go to, thank you, both of you. Item 13, Resolution Implementing Government Code 2121H regarding the appointment of Annette Munoz as interim finance director, Mr. Bodom.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and staff, Annette was, has been working here all along, Annette? Two months under what they call 21221G. And the City of Guadalupe is currently conducting recruitment for a permanent finance director, so we have to put her on as an H while that recruitment occurs. So under Government Code 21221H, a CalPERS retired and new attendant may be appointed to a vacant position during the recruitment for a permanent replacement, provided that the appointment is temporary and limited in duration. Appointee does not exceed 960 hours worked in any fiscal year. The appointee is not reinstated into CalPERS and does not receive any retirement-related incentives. Compensation falls within the established salary range, which it does. So therefore, I would recommend that you pass this resolution to appoint Annette Munoz as an interim under Code Section 21221H.
Any questions of Todd? Please.
I'm not sure if I missed an email, but I didn't realize we had a vacancy in that position. Currently, I thought we were still going through certain things.
There is a vacancy.
And it's, is that something that we can discuss here, or I just feel like that this, it wasn't mentioned in the HR report, and it wasn't, I, I wasn't aware that there was a actual vacancy there, so how do we proceed with receiving that information on how the vacancy came to be?
Councilmember Fernandez, the previous appointment was of, on a leave of absence, correct? And that leave of absence has come to an end. And that's all we can say at this moment.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, any comments on this item from the public? Please. Well, now, you're, you're better than the public at this point.
I want to make a similar comment on recruitment of this position as I did on the city administrator, and that is, this position also is a critical position, and this position handles the monies of the city, and there are tons of state and county reports that are required and things like that, so. Someone with, I'll stop and say, let me scratch that piece, it is an important position, and again, I think we need to take our time in finding the right person to handle all that's entailed in the finance director job description. Oh, and also that, should we approve the interim, I believe this particular individual is beyond qualified for the position, thanks.
Christina? Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-64.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez?
No.
Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vegas?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Julian?
Aye, Resolution passes. Okay, thank you. We'll go to item 14, Approval of Executive Salary Schedules, Mrs. Strather.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Bear with me on this one a little bit. So during a recent review of our city records, we noticed that some of the salary schedules for a few of the positions, specifically the unrepresented, had not been formally adopted or posted in accordance with the CalPERS standard requirements. So this resolution corrects that administrative oversight and ensures that all positions are properly documented and compliant going forward. So what we have here is the salary schedules for all represent, unrepresented employees from 2019 to date, specifically listing all the salary steps for each of the unrepresented positions, and including the two contracted positions of city administrator and director of public safety, which also needed to be on there. So this is basically just a catch-up and correction. Any questions?
And there's no fiscal?
Absolutely no fiscal impact, no, this is just documenting it and getting your approval.
I have a question.
Please.
Yes.
Sylvia, as the, as these salary ranges increase, does CalPERS have to be apprised every year?
It has to be posted on our site, and anytime we request approval from them, these need to be attached going forward, showing that they are documented and approved.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
Any public comments? From Council? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-65?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-65, approving the executive salary schedules for unrepresented employees.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Motion, please?
Councilmember Costa Junior is absent. Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vegas?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
And Mayor Julian.
Aye, Resolution passes. Next item is Approval of Employment Agreement with Mr. Michael Cash, Director of Public Safety, Mrs. Strather.
I'm not sure if you guys want to approve this one, but I'm going to go ahead. Sorry, Dave, I had to.
Is there a second to that?
So the parties did come to an informal agreement and were asking for execution of his employment contract to be extended for three years, commencing October 9th this year, and ending October 8th of 2028. No changes to his existing contract, this remains an at-will position. The base salary will now be $167,315,20, effective retroactive to October 9th. Thereafter, a 5% increase annually with satisfactory performance. His benefits are still consistent with other sworn personnel, and no other changes to the to the terms. So if we'd like to keep this good man on board.
We'll see after the vote. Any discussion? Okay.
It's just the wording of the, the agreement, the contract, regarding administrative leave, maybe this is a Sylvia or Todd question. I know that for those eligible for admin leave, that if it's not used at the end of a calendar year, it isn't carried over.
Correct.
And it's stated in the contract that way. What's interesting to me is on Section 9, which is Page 3 of 5 severance, that if the employee is terminated, if I'm reading this correctly, that they're paid for their, their vacation, of course, state law, and administrative time. But if somebody voluntarily leaves, they're not eligible to get their admin leave, it just seems kind of.
Yeah, I, I, I saw that as well. Yeah, actually read it over a few times.
Yeah, the other thing is, I circled this, why did I circle it, hang on. Oh, since the city administrator's contract or agreement is public, it is required 60 days to give notice. Yet, for a public safety director, it's only 30 days. I just, maybe, fill up the question to you, is there a reason for the difference, 60 versus 30?
No, the, I mean, I started in 2017, and these contracts were essentially in place then, and there's never been any indication to change them, I, I didn't make any recommendations on that.
It was just a question, I'm not, it was just.
No, I'm just saying that there's no, that you can, probably can't change it tonight. Or probably don't recommend that, but for the future, we can, you know, make that consistent. I would comment about your decision about, or your comment about administrative time. If, that's in connection with the council decision to terminate the employee prior to the end of the contract. So admin time, something the employee could have possibly taken, having he or she known the severance was coming. So that's probably why that's included as a kind of a benefit. But it doesn't have to be in there, and it could be subject to future negotiation, but that's probably why it applies in the case of severance, when the council says, you know, we're done before the termination of the contract, but then again, of course, that, that's, you know, there, there, there has to be a severance without some good cause, like a crime or something.
Okay. Any public comment on this item 15? Back to the council, your wishes, and is there a motion to approve the employment agreement with Mr. Michael Cash, Director of Public Safety?
I'll make a motion to approve the employment agreement with Michael Cash, Director of Public Safety.
Is there a second? No second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All aye, thank you, chief, thank you, Sylvia. Future agenda items, when is our next meeting in November, is it 20, what? 25th?
Yeah, the 11th was canceled.
And I would like to bring, if we have time, staff has time to, to talk about. And I would like to bring, if we have time, staff has time to, to talk about the, your, the elements for the general plan update, just to see where we are with that. Yeah, just to bring it back. It doesn't have to be detailed, but it, you know, we have a certain amount of time to reprove that, so.
All right, sounds good.
What's that?
Yes.
Yes. Any other additions to the future agenda? Nothing? Okay, we'll go to item seventeen announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to give you an update on the slow Cal Roots One item that will either be on your agenda for the twenty-fifth of November or the following meeting.
Okay.
Probably the following meeting, but we're hoping to get it on before Todd leaves since he was involved in all of that as well. He has useful information in the farmer's market.
Okay, announcements, council activity reports. I'll start on the right side, Christina.
I attended a coalition in Santa Maria in regards to immigration. The Santa Barbara Public Health was there and they talked about the individuals. If they were to move forward with their plan, how would it, it would impact locally? They did share that seven thousand five hundred patients would be transferred over. Just something that came out of it was that unfortunately, this does not account for individuals that aren't documented and don't have any insurance. They don't know those numbers and so more than just seven thousand five hundred individuals would be impacted. And so I think that was startling data for me as we see the administration change, federal changes and policies. It's just a stark reminder that a lot of our community is going to be in need in the, in the future days to come. And so looking for opportunities to hopefully connect with nonprofits and resources just to bring them down to Guadalupe.
Is that it? Okay.
I, on October seventeenth, I attended the zoo meeting, the bi-monthly meeting for the housing and homeless. Homelessness is, is the title. And they talked about a variety of things. And again, this is my fourth or fifth meeting and I'm still trying to get in tune with the various language because they, they do speak very, very quickly. But there are some stats that were given and this is our countywide. And some of this I had reported previously, but this is some update. For those individuals that are living in their cars, from two thousand and twenty-two, there were, this is, excuse me, Santa Barbara County, countywide, six hundred and seventy-five people and versus in two thousand and twenty-five, nine hundred and sixty-two. So that's increased. And one of the reasons they cited this is that these individuals, and this is a general statement, but these individuals are refusing services. Then the question was, why are they refusing services? And one individual's thought is that they feel comfortable that they have a home. They're living in their car, which is a very odd response. Also in, from two thousand and twenty-one, I can't see. Individuals that were exiting the system and, and getting permanent housing, there were nine hundred and sixty-nine. And in two thousand and twenty-four, there were thirteen hundred and sixty-eight. So that's very positive, individuals finding regular housing. There were two topics that came up that these were preliminary topics and I'm sure in the December meeting, they're going to get into more detail. And one has to do with vouchers, which most of us refer to as section eight housing. And in Guadalupe, there are four hundred, excuse me, forty-eight households. In Santa Maria, there are four hundred and five, just some statistics that were thrown out. The, the key topic though, that took most of the couple hours of the meeting was mixed status families. And Christina gave me a handout and asked if they had talked about it. And I have to say, you're, you're more familiar with this than, than I am. But what it, what it, my understanding from the discussion is that the mixed status families are those that are US citizens. These are the terms they use, US citizens, legal residents, or those others not eligible for assistance. That's another category. So if, if you have a family of four and there's the rent of the housing is three thousand dollars, one of the individuals may be in that category of not eligible for assistance. So that raises their, that family of four, their percentage of their rent. Is that fair? I don't know, but that was one of the topics of discussion. And there, let's see, my notes here. HUD is preparing to eliminate the prorated rent, which I was just speaking about. Christina, is there more you want to add on to this?
I think they're advocating because there might be some changes that they might, for policy changes, where they will possibly ban mixed status family household. And so what that looks like, if, if there's a family right now, maybe on emergency housing voucher and there's a mixed status family, that individual would have to leave the house. And so this isn't into play. They're just asking for community residents to advocate to their federal representatives because this is a possible policy that we may see come into play. They also, they also shared that there's an emergency housing voucher. It was supposed to sunset in late two thousand and twenty-six, but those funds may be expired December two thousand and twenty-six. And so what that means is two hundred and twenty-three households in Santa Barbara County alone may not have the opportunity to get a housing voucher. And so that's a hundred and four children here in Santa Barbara County, sixty-five seniors and ninety-one disabled members. So.
Yeah, I'm sure that in the meeting in December, we're going to get into more detail and probably ask the public to continue advocating for, for all of this and not have the, the family separated or evicted and all those negative things. Let's see, this past Sunday, the historical society had their Halloween event out at the park. David was there, out of the park, central. Last, last my head is, the jail, it was at the jail, actually. We opened the jail and cleaned the jail. David was there, thank you for coming. Our Nofol was there and he actually put a table up. We had pumpkins for the kids to use felt pens and do faces and things like that. Give out candies and we had a treasure chest for the kids to get treasures. Two comments I want to make about it. First of all, it was very successful. This is the first event that we've had, so we were very pleased. It was a very hot day too and windy, but the kids that came out, there was no, no one who wasn't accompanied by an adult. So we, excuse me, thought that was pretty cool. And the other thing was that there were families from Santa Maria who came here, which I thought was interesting because each family that came up, I, I was doing the pumpkins. I asked where they came from and most were from Guadalupe. But there were maybe five families that came from Santa Maria and I said, how did you find out about our event? It was on Facebook. So it was nice to see them coming here versus are always going over there. So that was neat. And then, let's see, on Friday, the twenty-fourth, I attended the Kiwanis Awards Dinner. And Charlene was there because she's a member of the Kiwanis. And this is an event that they had, they have every year to hand out donations to nonprofits. And I was fortunate to represent the Friends of the Guadalupe Library and we received a check for a thousand dollars, which is very cool. Thank you again.
Okay.
I'll go, I have a couple items that go real quick. This coming Thursday, there's what's called the Summit on Re-Imagine Government Land for Affordable Housing. Supervisor Caps mentions that there are six thousand acres of community or county-owned property and they want to be able to use that to build houses. So that's, there's all the cities of, including Guadalupe, all the cities in Santa Barbara County, schools are all represented there. That's from nine, from ten o'clock to one o'clock. And CalFresh support during November, there's going to be delays. Anybody that receives EBTs and CalFresh, you will not, as, as far as the shutdown goes, receive any EBT on your benefits. They're retroactive though. Once the, once the system goes back in the, in the play, you will be, you'll get those benefits back in your account. So the, so statewide, all those benefits are delayed. Again, if payments are paused, you will receive back payments for any missed months, once the federal government reopens. If your, your benefits for EBT and CalFresh are not canceled, they're just delayed. According to the food bank, Santa Barbara County, if you need food, go to Foster Road here locally and you can get food from the Foster Road Food Bank. And also at all, all of the, there's four food distribution in Guadalupe Senior Center, which is ours. FSA, which is that Family Services Agency, which is in, at Cañones de Chávez. The Beatitude House on Compadonico Street and McKinsey School also distributes. And the sites are posted on our website. So if you want to know the location and time, go to the city website. And so that's, it's pretty sad, but there's, there's resource. And the food bank is really reaching out to people if they need, need help. So pass that word on, if they do need help, go to these, you know, the different food banks here. We were told today that we're going to get as much as we can to Guadalupe residents, so. So we appreciate the help in distributing that. Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, that was last, last Thursday. Just an, an update and I sent, and I don't know if, did you get that, David? Did you get that? Okay, that's still, now you may already be involved in that, but State Round one, one to one sixty-six, Guadalupe pavement improvement. That's in the fall of two thousand and twenty-nine, that's the actual pavement along from Main Street to the, the bridge, that's in the fall of two thousand and twenty-nine. That's two point seven million. There's a meeting this, November the nineteenth here, sit here in this chamber to speak to residents about what's going to go on with that, with that process. They want community and they're required to get community input in terms of what impact that's going to have. The State Route one, Santa Maria River Bridge, that's the fall of, they're going to start working on it in the fall of this year. It's getting close to that. And that's a total replacement, that's sixty-two million. And they're actually going to build the bridge east of the existing bridge. You're not going to take the other one down until that's finished. State Route one, one sixty-six, the ADA improvements through our streets here in town. That's, that's the fall of two thousand and twenty-six and that's ten point eight million. And then the State Route one sixty, one sixty-six and one, which is up past the other side, that's got, that is pushed back for, by two years. So that's a summer of two thousand and twenty-eight and that's eighteen point three million. And the total is ninety-three million that's going to impact the city of Guadalupe, so. But then the last is city beautification updates. The city beautification is using as a nonprofit, the Guadalupe Community Action Coalition, because they're five oh one C three, so Indian nations for the beautification are going to that, you know, to that checking account for the, the city beautification. The group meets monthly and right now we've, we've placed seventeen and a half, seventeen half wine barrels. And you'll see them along the business side. And some people say, well, who's going to take care of it? Well, we went, we asked the owners to, you know, the, and most of them would say they'll, they'll water it. And Ball Agricultural, which is down the street from us, they're going to replace the, the plants when their product, when the new product comes up and they're going to replace them. And the, the Guadalupe hardware, Route one oh one, Ball Agriculture and private donations to five oh one three C are, are very, very helpful. So keep on, we, there's the, and again, the city staff is really, David's trying to get ahead of us and, and working on different projects. So you'll see, you'll see more in the, in the very near future. So that's all I had. There's, there's a meeting here, Caltrans is having a meeting here, if they haven't already scheduled it. It's going to be here in this room. So they're, they're going to talk about the, the project that's coming in on, on, on the pavement work here in town. I don't know yet, but it'll, it'll, it'll probably be, they may have two meetings, but we'll get that information. It's probably early after, late afternoon, so.
Just a quick reminder for staff, if anybody does experience challenges, there's a two-one-one phone number that community members can just call and ask questions. Where's the nearest food bank? I think they provide some type of wraparound services, so two-one-one in case they, you do find a, a community member in need of something.
By the way, in addition to the food bank, the food bank says, there's, there are a lot of people that, or many individuals that want to donate. And they can to the food banks itself here locally. So what, if it's ten dollars or fifteen dollars, the food bank has, the food bank operations here have the ability to, to go buy food and then distribute it to people. So everybody's kind of locking hands to make sure that everybody's well taken care of as, as best they can during this time, so. Any, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Go Dodgers.
Go Dodgers, absolutely.